Well, hello everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:30. And as you can see, we have several of our directors away. We have Vice President Miller away on travel, and we have Director Wiggins and I are here, of course, and we have Director Carrion and Director Pendrath joining us, we assume. So I'm watching their screens to make sure that we hear them.
Director Carrion is not on right now. He was on a moment ago.
Okay, we'll wait just to make sure that Director Carrion is on.
Okay.
I can always send him a copy.
That's great. And I think I see his face, is that right?
Uh.
Okay, so we are going to move on to Agenda Item 1.04, which is for pledge allegiance. And Superintendent Hanson is going to lead us in that tonight's conference.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will move on to Agenda Item 2.01, which is our action to approve our regular meeting agenda. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 2.01, action to approve regular meeting agenda?
I move to approve the regular meeting agenda.
And you have a second. Director Pendrath and Director Carrion, I'm going to need one of you to second that, please.
I second.
Thank you. So we have Director Wiggins' motion and Director Pendrath's seconded. Do we have any discussion about this agenda? Okay, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
The approval of Agenda Item 2.01, action to approve the regular meeting agenda passes four to zero. And that brings us to Agenda Item 3.01, which is our public comment section of the evening. And just as a reminder for those of you who may not have seen this before, each person will be given three minutes to comment, and a maximum of 20 minutes per any one topic will be allowed. Speakers whose comments are less than three minutes in length may not defer their remaining time to others. If there are multiple speakers on one topic, speakers may be limited to points of view not yet expressed. Any person wishing his or her comment retained as part of the permanent record may submit a prepared statement to the Board Secretary prior to the oral presentation. The President may trump an interrogate or terminate an individual's statement when it is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments and concerns related to district personnel will not be heard in public, but rather should be directed through the complaints concerning school personnel or programs, which is policy 4220. Formal presentations must be scheduled for the Superintendent in writing no later than Tuesday noon, one meeting preceding the regular meeting. And per work procedure, we will not answer or respond to any questions posed by speaker tonight, but we will make sure that you get a reply from either a staff member or one of us as soon as possible. So we have one public comment tonight, and I'm going to invite Val Paganelly up to the front.
Thank you, Madam President, fellow board members, and Superintendent Hanson. Val Paganelly, former School Board Director, Citizen District Number Five. I have a number of things that I just want to make observation of and say thank you for. Starting off with thank yous, Mr. Hanson, I want to thank you for being available to have a representative to participate in the Maple Valley Fourth of July event at Lake Wilderness this weekend. And I also want to put a thank you out to Tracy Kraus for making himself available to support some questions from the community regarding your previous personnel report that involved some HR positions. From the agenda tonight, some observations that I just want to make because they were important to me as a board member, and they're also important because it provided transparency as well as a view into the Board's work. One is that notably, a report from the Board Directors has no longer appeared on the agenda. And I know time constraints can play a part in that, but it also is really helpful to those watching, listening, and viewing the work of the Board to know the activities of respective board members and the roles that they serve. So that is an observation of amiss in my book. With respect to the consent agenda, I don't quite know what I want tonight. I just want to be fully transparent as well, because consent agendas can be tricky. That in there is the approval of the revised electoral boundaries, for which I've provided public comment previously, and I know the Board has done some extra work in that regard, but that those maps will look different, and those differences can mess up, yield some different outcomes as to who sits as the board of representation that we have throughout the district. So I just want to reiterate that. Agenda Item 6.01, Risk Management Annual Report. This is one of my favorites. I see that it is more robust than perhaps some of the years I was on the Board, and I appreciate that. As an actuary, that was one that I really delved into and put actuarial task, my professional view, to work. So to a degree, I can be of service to the Board in that report, and I still offer that. And then finally, the ADHOP Budget Committee Agenda Item to approve. That is something that came into being and came to life in concept when I was in my first few months on the Board as we were trying to pass, repass a failed levy. I just want to point out that that's great work that the system is doing, that the Board is potentially going to support tonight, but that we need to make it real and make sure that the document that's put together to support that is in full candor and full disclosure of the work that is being done, has been done, and the true work of that committee. Personally, I would advocate for it to be an ongoing advisory committee as opposed to ADHOP, but applaud the work of the district and what is forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Paganelly. We will now move on to Agenda Item. We're actually going to move past 4.01, since we don't have two board representatives joining us tonight. And we're going to move on to meeting management. And if you follow our agendas, you'll notice that this is typically something that you would see later in our meeting. Tonight, we had to move it up because there's a contract we need to approve before we're able to actually discuss an item that you'll see in just a little bit. So we're going to move on to Agenda Item 5.01, which is action to approve our consent agenda. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 5.01, action to approve our consent agenda?
I move to approve Agenda Item 5.01, action to approve consent.
Second.
Director Wiggins' motion and Director Pendrath's seconded. Seconded, thank you both. I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Director Carrion, did you vote? Yes? Yes, okay. The approval of Agenda Item 5.01, action to approve our consent agenda passes four to zero. We will now move on to Agenda Item 5.02, which is the action to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2022 board meeting. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 5.02, action to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2022 board meeting?
I move to approve Agenda Item 5.02, action to approve minutes of the June 13, 2022 board meeting.
I second.
Director Wiggins' motion and Director Pendrath's seconded. Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Since there's no discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The approval of Agenda Item 5.02, action to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2022 board meeting passes four to zero. And that brings us to Agenda Item 5.03, which is action to approve the minutes of the June 21, 2022 board meeting. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 5.03, action to approve minutes of the June 21 board meeting?
I move to approve Agenda Item 5.03, action to approve minutes of the June 21, 2022 board meeting.
I second.
Director Wiggins' motion and Director Pendrath's seconded. Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Since there's no discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The approval of Agenda Item 5.03, action to approve the minutes of the June 21, 2022 board meeting passes four to zero. Agenda Item 5.04 is action to approve the certificateated personnel report. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 5.04, approving our certificateated personnel report?
I move to approve Agenda Item 5.04, action to approve certificateated personnel report.
I second.
Oh, as you like, excuse me. I move to approve Agenda Item 5.04, action to approve revised certificateated personnel report.
I second.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us grace tonight, everybody. So Director Wiggins' motioned and Director Pendrath seconded. Do we have any discussion? I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
The approval of Agenda Item 5.04, approving our certificateated personnel reports as advised, passes four to zero. Agenda Item 5.05 is action to approve our classified personnel report. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 5.05, approving our classified personnel report?
I move to approve Agenda Item 5.05, action to approve classified personnel report, as you like.
I second.
Director Wiggins' motion and Director Pendrath's seconded. Do we have any discussion? I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
The approval of Agenda Item 5.05, approving our classified personnel report passes four to zero. And that brings us to Agenda Item 5.06, which is action to approve our coach personnel report. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 5.06, approving our coach personnel report?
I move to approve Agenda Item 5.06, action to approve coach personnel report, on your vote.
I second.
Director Wiggins' motion and Director Pendrath's seconded. Do we have any discussion? I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Yes, okay. The approval of Agenda Item 5.06, approving our coach personnel report passes four to zero. And that brings us to our presentation discussion and action item portion of the evening. Now, as we move into this section, I'd like to remind my fellow board directors that we have agreed on using round robin to ensure that each member has equal opportunity to speak. So we will keep our discussion length per agenda item in 20 minutes, which I'm going to monitor, and individual board members' discussions in three minutes per agenda item, which Mrs. Wheeler is going to monitor for us. Each district's time will begin with the first word they speak, and will continue through the responses that are provided. So Agenda Item 6.01 is our Risk Management Annual Report, and Risk Services Consultant Matt Leon with the Risk Pool will be presenting update for the WSRP.
Hello, my name is Suki Garcia, I'm with the Tohoma Finance Group. We have three guests here from the Risk Pool. They have prepared a very informative presentation that includes information on the organization of the Risk Pool, the entity itself, the services they provide, and a four-year snapshot of the claim services they have provided to Tohoma. On behalf of Tohoma, I would like to welcome them this evening, and also thank them for their time, support, and partnership. Over the years, they have provided us risk guidance, training, contract review, and legal support, just to name a few. They are a lifeline to many of us, like myself, and our first call in many situations. I'd like to introduce first Alex, our Senior Risk Consultant, Julie, our Claims Consultant. We work with the risk assessment side of the pool first in hopes of not needing Julie's services, as in all these work that way, and also Helen, our Underwriting Consultant.
Hello, thank you for inviting us here today, and thank you for that wonderful introduction. Yeah, I heard this part, my part, a little lerp, so I'm just going to repeat that, too. Hi, I'm Alex Hatt, I'm Senior Risk Services Consultant. With me today is our Senior Underwriting Consultant Helen Rogers-Litherer, and our Claims Consultant Julie Hartson. You're going to be here for the speech of us throughout the course of today. Before we go far too far into it, I did want to provide a quick overview of what WSRP is. That is the Washington Schools Risk Management Pool. We are founded in 1986. We are member-owned, member-governed, and member-driven, our school for school districts here in Washington. Our executive board is made up of our members, and it's a limited by members. Since 1986, WSRP has provided Tohoma School District property and liability coverage, claims handling, and risk mitigation services. Our coverage and risk services are designed specifically for school district activities. We work closely with members from the loss curves to process and handle the claim. Here's the contact information for the consultants that are assigned to Tohoma School District. You'll notice that Lucas Nolte is up there as the Risk Services Consultant. He apologized that he was unable to join us today, but we've got Julie there and Helen as well. And that, I'm going to step back for a moment, and introduce Julie to talk a bit more about our claims work and coverages.
Thank you for having us, we appreciate it. The coverages that we provide under our coverage agreement for the district, for Tohoma, they're pretty self-explanatory, auto liability, auto fiscal damage, employment practices, errors and omissions, SAM stands for Sexual Abuse and Lust Station. We have errors and omission coverages, general liability, property. The next three, investigations, special education, special education pre-loss, those are kind of a perk, we like to say, with your coverage agreements. We also have cyber coverage for the district, and we also have a crisis management team through the broker, so that if something happens, either traumatic or a crisis-type situation, we've got the coverage available and resources available through the district. For the claim services, we have obviously myself. We have individual claims consultants assigned to each member. There's an incident reporting process, so that if a district has any kind of an incidental report, it's a seamless process for you to go through. We investigate, we evaluate, figure out whether or not this is something the district owes or doesn't owe. We'll hire defense counsel on your behalf if necessary. And then if there's any coverage questions and determinations, we work with our brokers, with the carriers, and let you know that as well. Probably one of the main components is litigation management component. So if you are a student, or if there's a possibility of that, we offer those services. This is just kind of a brief overview, at 40,000-foot level, of the claims for the last three, and then up to the current term. The coverage agreement runs, and these numbers run from September 1st to October 30th or to August 31st. For the most part, it's fairly steady. There is one claim that significantly is shown in 19 to 20 coverage terms, but for the rest of them, the reserves, what's going to be, what still stands is actually relatively lower the claim count in five over the last four years. And then this just is a frequency chart that shows how many auto, how many, you know, how many investigations, how many property claims that the district has had over the last three, and then this partial, almost completed four year. The main one that it's like was obviously that one claim that was from the 20 to 25. The rest of them are relatively even and stable. And with that, I will pass to Helen to talk about.
Hopefully, we give you some very high-level overview of the coming 22, 23 annual. So the 2022, 2023 annual, here we have a 13% base rate increase that was approved by the pool board. And with that base increase, not everybody, I like to say everybody, we refer to members of the pool, are going to spend an actual 13% increase. Suddenly, you notice a decrease or spike, so it would be less than 13% some more. There are a number of factors that go into your total contribution amount. So when I say the base, so referring to your base rates, a couple of factors that go into that are going to be your FTE counts, or seeing like your FTE counts, the exposure counts that are to do to whatever covers that we're talking about. So if we're talking about second common collision on district-owned vehicles, we're looking at the number of vehicles that you have, times the rate for that particular coverage, times your experience mod, your X mod factor. Your X mod is a factor that our actuarials put together based off of partly WSRP laws data and your individual district's laws data. So the baseline, which in 1.0, anything below that, it means that you're going to see a decrease or slightly less, there's 13% increase overall in your contribution, basically above a 1.0, you're going to see a slight increase in that 13% base rate that you have in efforts. There are a number of factors that would be our exposure counts, or seeing there are a number of different exposures that apply to the different coverages. So for property, you're looking at the number of vehicles, if you're talking about the common collision, you're looking at your building coverage, you're looking at the total insured value for your buildings, including portables, the contents, number of district-owned vehicles, district-owned buses, or district-owned vehicles, or long-term lease vehicles, student FTE count, and staff, or district staff FTE count. And with the FTE counts, we're going to point out that we use the last completed school year. So we're going to be looking at, right now, we're in 21, 22, so we are looking at 2021 data when we're using your exposure. So prior to the upcoming 21, 22 year, so we're talking about the current year that we're in, and prior, there were only two different X mods that we had. We had property, and we had liability. The way that worked was anything that was a liability coverage, used that shared X mod factor. Anything that was property, including your buildings and your vehicles, were using the same mod factor. With that coming, we won't change what we made for this year, we're able to drill down a little more specific and identify areas where you're doing great, and because you're going to see that reflected in your X mod, you'll see that next one that's more worth than one. And then areas that we may have challenges, and that you want to work on with, like, your Risk Consultant Alex, you'll see that increase. Looking overall at Tohoma School District, you guys are doing, all of their X mods are the exception. Property are under 1.0, so that's great. So really, the driving factor that you're going to see in the increase is going to be that property. If you like that, I'll just step to Alex.
I see, it's a quick summary from claims and from underwriting. And so as I mentioned, for services, it's where we really care with you to see if we can avoid situations or losses, so that hopefully you don't have to talk to our claims team. That's our goal at the end of the day. We'd love to put them out of business as we can. So how do we go about doing that? Part of risk management, your WSRP member, is that you have access to a Risk Consultant. In your case, it will be Lucas. This is access by phone, by email, by Zoom, and in-person meetings that will come in and talk. These are, any questions might happen about an activity, or an activity you want to flip by when it comes to risk management, and think some best practices or some guidance, Tohoma School District is in good communication with WSRP. We appreciate the partnership and the reach out and the communication that we do have with it. Next, I'll talk about a bit more on the next slide, is the Personalized Risk Assessment Plan. But the focus here, we do offer to our members different scholarship and grant opportunities for risk management conferences and trainings. We also can do playground sections. We are trained through private playground safety instructors, as well as onsite walk-throughs. So if you're seeing an uptick in slip trip and balls, or just general increasing on second set of eyes, we're happy to come through and work with the district on that of the properties. Each year, we put out a fall and spring regional training calendar, and these trainings are put on by our attorney pool, as well as other subject matter experts on a variety of topics. Those are available on our website, you can take a look there for them. And then as a member, you do have access, or Tohoma School District does have access to doctor solutions, training platforms for both staff and students. The staff library is quite comprehensive, and we're working on building up that student resource library as well. So I mentioned Personalized Risk Assessment Plan briefly on the last slide, we oftentimes call it PRAF. And so during the year, your assigned Risk Consultant will meet with the district administration to review the school district's loss history and work together on this project that we're calling the PRAF. In a nutshell, the PRAF is a process of identifying and scoring current or potential risks the district might be facing. Ultimately, it leads to deeper conversations about risk management, and this helps create steps to address and prioritize risks within your district. You can see a bit more on the roadmap on the slide here. PRAF itself, giving an hour-long presentation, so. During this PRAF checking meetings, that the Risk Consultants have been having in Tohoma School District, all the risk failures were identified as areas of awareness for Tohoma. WSQ Risk Consultant Lucas Nolte will continue to be looking at these as we come into the next year. Up here, these are the identified risks that are either on the lines of the district or are possible in the future. Part of PRAF is trying to preemptively put controls in place, so that we, if we don't have to worry, we don't want to. So student health and safety, employee misconduct, general premises safety, tax security, you'll see up there as well, and that does have to come back into that cyber coverage that we have. Right now, we are seeing increased standard requirements for cyber for school districts, so that's something that we've been working with districts on, to make sure that they have MFA and things like that in place. And then property theft and vandalism is another one that, you know, both school districts are impacted with, particularly, we've seen an uptick in property theft. So that is what we presented for you today. Just want to say thank you for your partnership and your membership with WSRP, and we are all here to answer any questions you might have for us. Thank you.
And Director Pendrath and Director Carrion, I want to make sure that you have the chance to ask questions first, just so we can make sure you're connected. Director Garcia, do you see?
I'm not seeing anything from either of them.
Okay, just jump in if you have any questions. And Director Wiggins, did you have anything you wanted to ask?
Yeah, a couple of questions, if I can. So what do you, I guess the first question kind of high-level, what do you see is, I don't know where to start, I kind of follow this, right? And I know that sometimes there's, you can spot trends in risk over time. What do you see as being, maybe more broadly for school districts, but particularly for Tohoma, what do you see as being some divergence or kind of receiving this and other trends that you're seeing that we should be mindful of as a district?
So just speak more of the broadly, just not your district's assigned Risk Consultant, so I'm not as familiar with your claims, someone else might be, but that is a good conversation that you could have later on with Lucas. Broadly, we are seeing sexual abuse and lust station claims. We're seeing the frequency of going as well, as well as just what they are settling out for, and that dollar amount severity there. Something I mentioned in there as well was cyber. That's a concern that we're having, we're seeing more school districts across the nation getting hit, and they're shutting down their systems for a period of time, and in some cases, districts are forced to pay ransom to get their equipment back and all that student information. Controlling student data is all wrapped up into that, and it's incredibly critical right now. So cyber is the big one we're seeing coming up, you know, with some aging buildings, property is always on everyone's mind, and any property updates, and there's levies and cons cast to do that. So I would say cyber, property, and sexual abuse, lust station in a general.
Is the cyber, is it correlated with the piece of remote learning, sort of the high-leverage technology for?
That definitely increased access, yeah. That did increase access, and that means that there needs to be additional, you know, protocols, procedures in place for how you're handling that equipment and how you're contracting with those different third parties when it comes to protecting student data. Cyber, I think though, just on a whole, outside of the educational field, is increasing risk for all fields.
And then my second question would be, I understand it differs between X mods, and on the hardware, actually, you try to go to different areas. How does student mental health fit into, like, risk management, kind of our?
Yeah, so you can have student mental health in there. Part of the Personalized Risk Assessment Plan is we're almost trying to look at risks that are specific to claims. It's really putting together a big image picture of what our district might be facing, what you're concerned about. So for student mental health, its inclusion on there isn't so much in place basis as much as this is something that we might have resources for, or connections that we could help, help that become a potential claim. Make sure that if you do have a student who is suffering in some way, you have the procedures or the protocol set up, and to outside help to address that. So right now, it's not a claim, but we're hoping that we put those proper procedures So right now, it's not a claim, but we're hoping that we put those proper procedures in place and staff training. We can keep it that way for you.
I appreciated your reminder that that list that we saw earlier of needs that our district have, including things that were being, that were proactive, it's not that we're necessarily reacting to something. I think that could be misinterpreted very easily by somebody who's just looking at the list, so thank you for reiterating that. And Cindy, I have a question for you, as we were looking at the list of risk management down the term. Risk management services, so when they can come out and give us proactive suggestions about how we can, could minimize our risk, are we taking advantage of that already?
Yeah, I can talk to you about, we are taking advantage of that. One item that comes to mind right off, right off the top is playground safety. Each time we install a new, you know, full new playground or even a playground element, we review that element with the risk pool. We've had them out multiple times to assess our playgrounds for safety, so we definitely take advantage of that. We also take advantage of their training, their playground safety training. We have sent our playground inspector through their training program. We use their contract review services fairly often, just to review indemnification clauses in our contracts, just to make sure we're, you know, we're covered. We have used their, we have used their services to evaluate safe walking paths, and also we use their support to educate our district in crossing cars. Those are just some things that come to mind.
Thank you very much. And Director Garcia, can you do a quick look to see if Director Pendrath or Director Karyan have any questions they wanted to ask before we close this agenda item?
Matt's shaking his head.
I need to see me again.
Yes, Director Pendrath.
So I understand that Lucas, our rep, isn't here. I'm just curious if there's, if you can speak a little bit about why our property is, has a higher risk factor with the X mod, I'm probably saying that wrong, but is there, can we hear a little bit more on that?
So what I have prepared today was just a very high level.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, but I would be happy to, or I should be. But Matt, you are happy to set up a separate meeting and go more in at them, look at overall, even just discussing each of your X mods.
Oh, no problem. I was just curious if that is something that you're kind of seeing also, like district rider, like I guess from a high level, what it could mean, so no problem at all.
Superintendent Hanson, did you have something you wanted to add?
I do. If the board would like me to all have Assistant Superintendent Cloud make sure that that happens, and then we can report back to the board.
Thank you all so much for joining us tonight, and please know that you are welcome to leave. We love seeing you here, but you, we know you have busy lives, so you are welcome to leave, and thank you for your time. We are moving on to Agenda Item 6.02, which is our ad hoc discipline module, and I believe Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Don Joy, please, if you can join us now. Thank you. Good to have you.
So I want to provide for you the annual report connected to discipline and attendance, and there's a few pieces that I would highlight for you. And actually, sorry. This one's unfortunately aged, it's just a scrolling moment of a document, so sorry. One of the things that I'm sure that you probably looked at as you were looking at attendance, so if you would like to scroll down just a tad, and you can tap first chart. Typical in our system for a number of students who are at 90% or above attendance, so students who in that 90 to 100%, would be where we call it either good attendance is zero to 5%, and then 5 to 10%, you know, we kind of have a little bit on alert, but we really don't get concerned until we get over into that product area, 10% or more absences. And so rather than thinking about it from a deficit perspective, a number of years ago, we've had a flip to like more positive, so thinking about 90% attendance or better is the metric that we're looking at. The typical in our system is to look at numbers there in, at the very lowest, when you look at those kind of low numbers, up to 74 to, and then up to 83, but of course our COVID years were a little bit weird, so those are asterisks, but we are down in the mid-60s. And overall, as we look at our entire system, that 65% of our students with non-attendant attendance or greater, that is definitely a result of our last year with quarantines and just students being absent because of COVID. And as we look at that and track that, both across all of our buildings and their site plan reports, attendance has been one of those factors that building principals and teams have been alert to, and thinking about fall and winter and spring. And we, when you look at those data points across our buildings, you really see it being pretty consistent, so where we would have thought, like, gosh, after we got past that wave in the winter, boy, we're just going to see that, you know, spring right back, and we really didn't. And so just that challenge for our students in getting back to being at school, that really significant amount of time, that's been a challenge for our families too. And so we're just still feeling that, even, even the last part of the school year. So that would be kind of piece number one from this year, when we look at the summary of that information. AJ, if you would go ahead and, we give, on that next chart, it's really just specifics by school, and I didn't really have anything in particular there, I think it kind of speaks for itself, but certainly if you have any questions, I'd be happy to pause, we'll notice that our truancy petitions is really no different than where we were at prior to COVID, so it's kind of. AJ, can you scroll down a little? There you go, there is that truancy petition. So we're about the same range that we normally get. Harvard County continues to provide support for our school system in that area, so for work very much. Then we have some disaggregation by race and ethnicity, and then by all of our other subgroups that we normally disaggregate upon. Again, there isn't anything there that I would necessarily point your attention to, if they could kind of see that, that same challenge for, for attendance across all of our, all of our different groups. In a few where you notice a little bit smaller numbers, we also have really small indices there, so those are particularly volatile, and we see that. So then we move down into our discipline recording, and in this case, I would say, in general, as we talk to our building principals and our teams and our assistant principals, I think that they would all say that it's been a challenging year. It's been a challenging year connected to student behavior, partly because what they really saw, and I think what we all experienced in the schools as we were out with them, talking with those, is that in that period of students being out of school, that we had eighth graders who really hadn't been right in a normal school environment since sixth grade, and so kind of that two-year gap, and really seeing that some of the socialization behaviors just felt a challenge, and kids weren't where we necessarily expected them to be, or hoped that they would be from an age perspective, and so that moment of just helping to think about all of our PBIS core work, and reestablishing expectations, and just getting kids back to that, to that level that we want them to be. And definitely think from our building principal general perspective, they would say they made great strides this year, but we still aren't quite back to where we should be at. And so that work continues, and certainly our social-emotional learning focus is going to continue, as will all of our work connected to equity, and just how we treat each other, and student belonging, like that's not going to stop. We're committed to that work, and all of our building teams are too, and you'll see that, you'll see that continue as we think about how to get kids to where we want them to be. When you look at the actual data, and if you were to look overall at kind of total number of occurrences, and to some extent, you'd look at that and you'd say, you know what, not really that out of whack, connected to where we were really at pre-pandemic, when you look at the overall number of disciplines. But the place where you really see the difference, and AJ, if you scroll down just a little bit, so that we can look and see, actually, up just a little bit, there you go, it's up. And if we are to look at, say, the, in this particular case, we're looking at out-of-school suspensions and expulsions, and you're looking at our overall school district, at our number there, if you look at pre-pandemic and where we are right now, and you look at that and you say, you know what, that's not really out of whack, that doesn't look hugely abnormal. Go ahead and move down to page eight. Rapid on my, by building, there, really we're looking at totals, again, that thing, that seems completely out of whack, if you can move down a little bit, AJ. When you look here and you actually look at, and you talk a little bit to our building principals, and you ask some questions connected to some of the behaviors that they saw this year, while total numbers aren't really completely, you know, out of whack connected to pre-pandemic, what they will see is some, what they will say is some of the behaviors that they saw were fairly extreme for a very small number of students. So for a very small number of students, we really saw, they saw and experienced quite a big difference in kind of the extremism of behavior, and that we really see in that moment connected to expulsions, and they're thinking about that comparison from pre-pandemic to where we're at now, and you look at that and you say, ooh, now those, some of those numbers look, again, like, that's a big, that's a big change. So we certainly have places where our building principals are zeroing in on how can we continue to understand concerns that students are having, how can we continue to focus in on those anticipations? Questions or thoughts that we have? Director Wiggins, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, Dawn, to echo back, so we'll leave that last kind of thought that you shared, so I'm looking at the major differences in its year point, it's actually lower than it's been many years in the past.
Right.
And then you go down, and then we're looking at the number suspension, it's actually higher than it's been in many, most of the years passed. So is that, is that what you're saying, where there's not as, it's almost flipped, like it's not the absolute numbers that are concerning, it's the way that we're looking at each other?
Kind of, so it's, it's that, it's not that we're seeing so many more individual students, some behaviors that there's a smaller number, and the behaviors seem more extreme.
Maybe to you, some of those.
Yeah. So the consequences have been, as a result, more extreme than some of the ones that we had to deal with, they had to deal with before. And some of that, it's, you know, as I think about the behaviors on the surface, and then as I listen to the stories from some of our principals, as they talk about situations with individual students, and try to problem solve, and work with families and all of that, I think that's also where we just see the challenges are great, connected to the circumstances that families are kind of dealing with, and as a result, that some of our students are really dealing with. And so there's been great challenges that they experiences that we've all been through the last couple of years, that we have brought to families, and I think we see some of that come forward at school.
Does expulsion show up on attendance?
You know, it doesn't as far as, when you look at the attendance data that you would see, if a student had been expelled, one, we try to make sure that that expulsion, while they may not be coming back to in-school services, we get them set up very quickly without building services, and so none of those expulsion, or very few of those expulsion days would actually count as absent for a student, because we're starting out of the schoolhouse, school services for them very quickly. And again, it just depends so much on the individual circumstances for parents.
Director Pendrath and Director Karyan, I'm going to start calling you just one at a time to see if you have questions on each of these agenda items, just to make sure that I don't miss you. So Director Pendrath, do you have any questions or comments?
She's good.
No, okay, and Director Karyan?
Yeah, I do, if you could hear me. Regarding the 90% attendance, Dawn, is that, do we feel that releasing is really, it's like, because of COVID, just due to illness, or is that something as a school district we feel we can prevent and improve those numbers by action we can do in the district? I was kind of confused on what, what is that going to be, our action out of those numbers from a district, why do we feel it's just a COVID response, or is it something that we can do to improve those numbers next year?
Yeah, I really, I really think for the most part, what we see is COVID quarantine absences, so students might not have been sick, but remember before, King County kind of changed the rules, which actually didn't happen in March until late February, or into March. And so really, a substantial part of the school year, if students were in close contact with somebody, then the impact for them on quarantine was just dramatic. I want to quote a number, and I'm going to force myself not to, because I know I will not have it wrong, but I will actually bring you, the total number of quarantine days that we had as a school system was extreme, and I will walk back to my computer and pull it up, because I should be able to recite it right off the top of my head, but I normally get it wrong, and I don't want to do that, so it's all, I'll plug in that in just a second, but it's like, oh my goodness, I know I should. Yeah, I was talking about it this morning, she was speaking about it, and you know it's good, but you realize it's quite that big.
Director Karyan, did you have any other questions?
Not necessarily.
I was listening to that, though. I don't, I think in terms of actionable items, that we're still going to be looking at how are we getting our students connected to school and loving school, and making sure that we're doing all of the PBIS work that is valuable, and keeps kids connected to school, and helps them socially, emotionally, so I think those are still actionable items that'll be happening in the meantime, to help keep kids wanting to be at school, but COVID is a whole different, all of that, so, you know, just keep it in action to the end.
Yeah, my question's more about, I mean, is there a fear there from the students to attend school, not because they are ill or because they're quarantined, but because there's a fear either due to COVID or some other reason, and that was driving attendance as well?
I think at times there were, Matt, but I don't think that I was necessarily hearing a lot of that, but we keep our ears alert to that as a possibility.
Yes, Superintendent Hanson?
I 100% agree with Dawn on that one, where it's not, it's not zero, but that's not the substantial piece, and it's really tough looking at this data, because so much of it is quarantine. It's really tough looking at this data because so much of it is quarantine related. The other piece is for context around student behaviors and discipline. This is certainly something that's in all of our education journals. This is what's going on across the country right now and what people are working through. And so a hundred percent agreement also with Mary around the importance of expectations and PBIS workers.
Thank you. And I have a question about making sure that from a 30,000-foot view level, we're having consistent discipline and also support at each of our buildings. What support systems do we have in place to ensure that that actually happens?
So historically, we actually, Mary, had for many years has led a meeting of all of our deans, typically our elementary and our secondary, at times separately, many times together, to be able to help to support both attendance and the pieces with attendance, but also the discipline and for the problem solving that they've done connected as a PBIS district team.
Just positive behavior intervention supports. And there's three tiers to that. Tier one, tier two, and tier three. And tier one is a hundred percent of our students and what we do in each building that helps support our students to grow socially emotionally, to know clear expectations in the building and have success with that, to feel connected to their school through different assemblies and feeling we're part of that, that I have school spirit and I'm part of this school and it's important I'm here. So there are all kinds of things that we are actually refreshing as we go. And each building has been working on some fantastic goals with their PBIS teams at the building level. But there's more correcting to do because things were unlearned when they weren't here at school. So we're repairing as we go and it will get better again.
So it sounds like there's an opportunity for a meeting of the minds to collaborate and learn from each other about what is working and how to fix areas that are not working as well as we'd like. Is that correct?
Yeah. So getting back to that normal routine of building regular meetings and so that that team continues to strengthen will certainly continue. The other piece is just know that they are giving some training. In fact, right here in this room, last week, we had a great cadre across our buildings, a number of our buildings that would participate in restorative practices, training. And so they left really energized about what they learned and then being able to take that back to their.
Which is thinking about alternatives to suspensions and thinking about how we help kids repair things that they broke in through their previous years. So it's pretty cool.
So continuing that. Great, thank you.
I was, I can see a conversation between us on a potential agenda item falls for a report back on PBIS.
That would be fantastic. Yes, thank you. Well, thank you both very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 6.03, action to approve the GPES, which is Glacier Park Elementary School, new double classroom portable purchase and install. Ma'am, please have a motion to approve agenda item 6.03, action to approve the GPES, new double classroom portable purchase and install.
And move to action on agenda item 6.03, action to approve GPS, new double classroom portable purchase and install.
One second. Director Wiggins motion and Director Pendergraph seconded. Thank you. And we now have Laura Clapp joining us.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we're not having you join us yet. Ma'am, please. Oh, no, we have discussion. Yes, you're going to join us, I was correct. I'm joining. The Zoom is really throwing me half a lot. Okay.
Could you put the remote to the board, please, CJ? So this is the portable proposal for Glacier Park Elementary. We are, as you can see, the total cost of all being estimated, four hundred to over $423,000. And we have done all of the previous work and digging and investigating, but they should be ready to go operational by September 1st.
Do we have any questions? Director Kurian, do you have any question?
Yeah, Laura, where's she going to go?
There, if you go back behind Glacier Park, there is a spot that we previously had a portable bathroom that was removed and it's going right in. So if you're looking out the back of the school, it's going to be to the left-hand side. As you can see.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Director Pendergraph, do you have any questions?
No.
All right, I'm good, thank you. Okay. So I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The approval of agenda item 6.03, action to approve the GPES, new double classroom portable purchase and install passes four to zero. And that brings us to agenda item 6.04, which is action to approve the comprehensive school council plan. Ma'am, please have a motion to approve agenda item 6.04, action to approve the comprehensive school council plan.
And move to approve agenda item 6.04, action to approve comprehensive school council.
Next second. Director Wiggins motion and Director Pendergraph seconded. And we now have one of those coordinator, Liz Beaver, joining us to approve this question.
Hi. Very, very nice to see you guys. Want to see you more, so I'll be up there more. Nice to see you. So I'm excited about this because this is my love. So I've been a school counselor the last 10 years and then two years in this position. So this is actually a really cool thing for our state, passing a law, talking about comprehensive council programs. And so I'm here to inform you about a few things that are going on in the state and then also what we do in our district, tell your review of that, but just show you what we want to add to make sure we're in line with what the state's asking us to do. So a couple purposes for tonight, just to kind of get on the state page about our current school council model and then talk through the state requirements for the council plan and then also our transition action plan for next year. So this is our reality. I was trained on the Asken National Model as most of the other school counselors when they went through their counseling programs. And so this is what we've been using for years. When I was higher, it was something that at the job fair, we talked about, I was hoping that they were, that to home it was versed in Asken National Model. And they were. So that's very exciting. And so this is kind of an overview of what, of what kids would feel in a, in a comprehensive school counseling plan. So we know that tier model, tier one being all kids and two, tier two, some and few of the, the tier three. But what's different about this in the school counseling program is that you have the three different domains. And so those are the three things that we're training for as school counselors, ESAs. And so we have our academic, college and career, and then social emotional. And so in each one of those, we have activities and things that we do for all three tiers. And so as you can see, in the middle, each tier, in the Asken National Models, gaining data to make sure that we're, our programs are effective and that we're either adding things or taking things away if they're not being effective. So this is kind of a good visual of what the Asken National Model asks us as counselors to do. I am so pleased to say this is, this is the mindset of our school counselors. As they talk to school counselors in the other districts, they don't do this or they haven't seen this, or this isn't something that is normal for them. So it's exciting to say that this is what we do in our, in our district. So do we have things that we can do better and bolster up and robust? Yes. So that's why this is exciting because it gives us a chance to really look at what we did. And then last year with the, with the comprehensive audit, I used this model. And so we were able to see any gaps that we had and we'll be able to kind of look at some of those and see what we need to add as well. So we have lots of people that help us with this, with the comprehensive plan. And so obviously our school counselors and to home, there's still as supportive of school counselors and ensuring that our student to counselor ratio is appropriate, we're lowering it as we can and as funds allow. But what that does is that gives kids access to a school counselor when they need it the most, and especially with what we're talking about with attendance and with mental health, they need access to their school counselor. And so we're doing a great job with that. Another group that is, these last four or five years, the expert coordinators at the middle and high school level now, which is very exciting that we've been able to add them at the high school level and the support that we've had in our district, about 20% of the kids that we find through the expert process, we wouldn't have known about. We've got them to their services, recruit them to a counselor or a group or a club or sport or something like that. A need, a need was met. So without that, we potentially wouldn't have found those kids. So that's a very big part of the program. Also the future ready specialists in the library. So they are not only helping with college and career, but also with social emotional at the elementary, middle level. And then our amazing SEL parents at the elementary level, they just extend the hands of our, of our school counselors. And that's really exciting because they can do different things that with more people and army of folks that are looking for kids' needs, they allow the school counselors to do other jobs that they, they may not have done before they were there present on my campus. So we're excited about them. So Senate Bill 5030 was passed last spring and this is, this is exciting for Washington State because it asks that every school and every district have a comprehensive school counseling plan. So with that, it ensures that students have access to their school counselor, they have access to social, emotional, sports, academic and college and career for all students. And using that national model is what they wrote this, this bill on. And so the main parts of that is ensuring that there is, there is a comprehensive plan in each, of each district and then each school, clarify roles and responsibilities and just ensure that all students are having needs met. So there's four large workharvests of 5030 and OSBI has been amazing teammates and giving us templates and things to work on and paying for folks to come in and train. We've had our counselors on those trains and then, and then also templates and things that we can use to make sure that we're following guidelines. And so all the other districts, we have lots of collaborative with other districts too. And so I get to actually be a front runner and say, this is what we do. And when people go, how do you do that? Because we have great support at our district. So that's, that's been exciting to be part of. But so the related state national standards is one of the large ones that we have, we use these in our district. So not a lot to kind of bolster up their data review and analysis. And those are the ways that we're looking at our comprehensive plans and then showing maybe how we need to get better or maybe different things that we should do. Use of time. So how counselors use their time, making sure that they're using their time directly and indirectly with students for 80% of their, of their day. And then the use of personnel. So those would be all the folks that you saw on that previous slide with all of our partners. So the action items for next year, so this is kind of a two-year, OSBI gave guidelines of two years. So this next year, doing a transition or action plan. And then for the 23, 24 school year, having full implementation, we are doing well. So these are, these are additions that we want to add for next year. So with the use of standards, really utilizing the standards that we know, we teach our folks, but putting those into lessons for, for those three domains. And then with our data review and analysis, the charge and the makeup, we want to start a advisory committee that's part of the requirements from the state. And so that will be right along with books that are already pouring into the wellness department and so helping us with those things. But we'll be asking also other folks, stakeholders of the comprehensive counseling plans to make sure and review and give us feedback as well. So we'll be looking at the charge and the makeup of the advisory committee in this next year. And then an annual counselor admin goal setting. So that's part of the requirements as well. That's what they do already, except for it's not on a piece of paper. So now we can have a really nice template and a way to look at data of what student needs are, what her goals are, and then to look at the review at the end of the year. Use of time. This is the training that OSBI has given through Trish Hatch and, and her work, the model that we saw with the three tier and then three domains, that's a picture from Trish Hatch and her work. She does a lot of work around data and making sure that we're getting data around what we're doing so then we can do it better. Or if it's not effective, we use our time in a different way. But really utilizing her work to train our school counselors and admin to ensure that what we're doing and the time we're spending is what we need to be doing. And then lastly, use of personnel, kind of the transition action plan is just looking at the counselor time, making sure that 80% of it, which is what's stated in the, in the bill, is used for direct and indirect services. So school counselors this year have been doing a use of time calculator, which is what the Asken National Model has. And we're right on track. So I'm feeling very good about where we're spending our time. There are places where we can tweak and make things a little better, but, but I'm feeling good about where we're at. So that's, that's great news. And then just ensuring that all of our partners are really up on what a comprehensive school counseling plan is and how to use that in the most effective way. I think that was a thank you slide there. It was. But I just, I, we can't do all these things without board support, without district support, without superintendent support. I knew Superintendent Hanson is a strong advocate for wellness, for our school counselors, for nurses. And so I just, I appreciate all of that because that helps us do what we love to do and help kids in this way. So that's my presentation. Any questions for people?
Director Wiggins, do you have anything to like to share or ask?
For Laura.
Oh, okay.
I don't have to ask them, but I'll do that.
Director Pendergraph? No? Okay, Director Kurian?
Thanks.
Okay, so to you.
Thank you, Liz. So like a couple of things. One is, I'm mindful of change fatigue. Like last two years have been nothing but change.
Agreed.
And now we have this other thing that's coming in. So one, is there any concern with evolving again so quickly? And then maybe kind of related to that, I feel like they're talking, I feel like we're committing a lot of this stuff that this thing is going to require. Can you comment on that? It's like, what, what are some things we actually working on this? What are some days that we're already doing and how much, how much of a lift is this creating?
So last spring, this bill passed, I've been part of the Washington School Counselor Association for 12 years. This is something that they've been working on and I've been part of. And so I could see it coming from a mile away. So that went through, you know, let folks know here, hey, this is coming, this is coming down the pipe. So for all this school year, every time we meet with counselors, they're very tired of hearing about 5030. So it's not as big of a lift as it feels probably for other folks who don't argue the things pretty well. So I'm, I'm, like you say, this is all stuff that we do, it's really putting it on paper and putting a plan up on our website to say, this is what we do, what we want to do for next year, but knowing that we're in a really good place and I, I'm proud of our work. So like, you know, your kids have been through all of this stuff and you've seen these things, you know, plus the personal. So, I mean, we do a good job here in Tohoma. Answer your question.
Yeah, yeah. And then this is the district white action plan. How does it break out in the video slides?
Yeah. Good question. So they start with a district plan and then by next year, we'll, we'll run one for each school. But it goes, it stems off what we do within district. So, I mean, the plan, elementary looks a little different than middle and a little different than high because of the, you know, the different needs, the different places. But the model's the same, it's just the delivery that looks a little different.
So I have just one question for you. As we were looking at the different departments within the wellness team, I would imagine that it would be really easy to collaborate and it also would be really easy to not collaborate, right? You can think of the future ready team thinking of themselves as just future ready specialists and the expert team just thinking of expert specialists. So how do you ensure that the, for example, the high, at the high school level, the counselors are collaborating with the future ready specialists and then they're also collaborating with the expert team? Because we're Because working together, it seems like momentum they could have would be exponential.
Yes. And that's really the reason why the advisory committee was, was one of the stipulations for this bill is just for that reason. So all stakeholders that would be part of, either part of or a recipient of the school counseling comprehensive plan would be part of that. Any wellness committee that we do, we have all of those folks there as well. So there's always a lead into, so, you know, I can think of a couple of different committees that I have that each one of those people, we have somebody with that voice. And so then when they go back to their crew, we can, we can know that they're talking to their crew about what we're doing. However, that makes me feel like I need one with just those people to make sure. But that, that's part of the plan too, and just the use of personnel and talking about what is an effective comprehensive school counseling plan and then how do we do that well together? So I think that, that part of the requirement will speak to what you're asking for and I, I definitely think that that's important.
Thank you. So since there is no more discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item six point zero, or action to approve the comprehensive school counseling plan passes forward to zero. And that brings us to agenda item six point zero five, which is our first reading revised policy and procedures, point one forty guidance in counseling. And you are staying with us for that.
I second. Yep. So this is really just updated wording for school counseling as a whole and then also updated wording with the new, or the new Senate bill. So finally, was it to have guidance counselor out of policy? So that's kind of like a, you know, badge of new work for school counselors. However, the wording that they have now in the policy and the procedure are fit to ask the national model, fit what the bill is asking of, of the state. So it, it all aligns now.
Excellent. Director Karyon, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Director Pendrakraft?
No, looks good.
Director Wiggins? And I don't have anything either. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your support. Very, very appreciate it.
We will move on to agenda item six point zero six, which is action to approve the revised twenty-two, twenty-three school year. May I please have a motion to approve agenda item six point zero six, action to approve the revised twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar?
I move to approve agenda item six point zero six, action to approve revised twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar.
I second. Director Wiggins motioned and Director Pendrakraft seconded. Thank you. And Lori Clot, please join us. Hello?
Thank you, Jessica. I'm here to present a revised, excuse me, revised twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar based on the earlier adoption of the contract and change in professional development days. As a result, the calendar committee met to discuss what the, how the two additional professional development days should be added to the calendar for next year. And they have those data on to the end of this school year. So previously, the last day of school, excuse me, now it's the last day of school for the twenty-two, twenty-two school year will be June twenty-first instead of the sixteenth. The nineteenth is recognized as a, is June twenty, June twenty day.
Okay, thank you. And Director Pendrakraft, do you have any questions about this?
No, looks good.
Director Karyon?
No questions.
Director Wiggins? I have a question about how this calendar was put together. I know that at some point before we were looking at these revisions, we invited our families, staff, community to contribute to a survey. Is this incorporating all of those, all of that feedback?
I believe all of the feedback that they could actually put into the calendar was taken into account, yes.
Okay.
There was a lot of things that were conflicting, if you might understand, but yes.
Okay, excellent.
Considered.
Fantastic. And then the next question is about rollout. So Director Karyon, do you have a, a timeline for rolling this information out to families?
Pretty soon, probably before the end of this week even. And then continuously reminding people who probably are away on vacation and won't see it. So we'll make sure we get it out there a few times for family before the summer with some context of why the changes were made too.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And, and I assume you're going to include a reminder that they participated in the survey and their feedback was included as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. So I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
The approval of agenda item six point zero six, action to approve our revised twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar passes forward to zero. And that brings us to agenda item six point zero seven, which is action to approve the revised twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar. May I please have a motion to approve agenda item six point zero seven, action to approve the revised twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar?
I move to approve agenda item six point zero seven, action to approve revised twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar.
Director Wiggins motioned and Director Pendrakraft seconded. And Lori Clot?
This is the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar that I believe have not been presented yet. This is, this is very similar to the twenty-two, twenty-three. And again, it has the professional development days that have been included in this calendar. The one note that I would make comment on is the first day of school is August thirtieth. This is in the twenty-three, twenty-four, and the last day is June twenty-first.
Director Karyon, do you have any questions?
Questions?
Director Pendrakraft?
No, no.
Director Wiggins?
No, just a comment. I just think it's important to point out what the major professional development days and means to teachers and students and that fissures of that as a place to, to counter. That is maybe my grand expansion, feel like an expansion of calendars that you would, just to follow the grand schedule, be able to really use days. So happy to see those.
We'll make sure that that is communicated well.
Yes, did you write that down?
Would you like a direct quote from Director Wiggins? Okay, since there's no more discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The approval of agenda item six point zero seven, action to approve our revised twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar passes forward to zero. And that takes us to agenda item six point zero eight, which is our action to approve a Chromebook purchase. May I please have a motion to approve agenda item six point zero eight, action to approve the Chromebook purchase?
I move to approve agenda item six point zero eight, action to approve Chromebook purchase.
I second. Director Wiggins motioned, motioned. Director Pendrakraft seconded. There were many upwards. And Lori Clot, are you?
I can hear your support.
I was good.
Director Wiggins?
And I'm also here for the same.
Director Karyon, answer any questions that you might have. A part of the actual tech plan that you've already passed, it's just a large purchase
Director Pendrakraft, do you have any questions?
No.
Director Karyon?
Is, I mean, is any training required with this purchase or anything like that, Lori?
Isn't any training required, training?
There is no training required for this, this purchase.
Director Wiggins?
Yeah, I was, and I'm, I'm pulling forward one of the presentations that we have earlier made on the, on this, kind of the area of the technology. As we think about expanding our, helping enrich technology to the classroom, students, and more people having their hands on that technology, can you just like, if you heard the comments saying, could you, could you like give us a quick, your take on that? I mean, what are the things as we, as we do this, as we acquire Chromebooks, as we develop technology, what are some of the things we're thinking about in terms of managing that risk?
Specifically from the Chromebook side, it's very minimal from, from a risk standpoint. They're very kind of designed for multi-use scenarios.
The Chromebooks?
Yeah, they're, they're safe, they're intended for this purpose. We have a lot of other endeavors that we hope to bring to the board and this coming school year that will address a lot of those risk factors that are being applied.
Thank you. And since that's the end of our discussion, I'm calling for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The approval of agenda item six point zero eight, action to approve our Chromebook purchase passes forward to zero. We will move on to agenda item six point zero nine, which is action to approve the ad hoc budget committee. May I please have a motion to approve agenda item six point zero nine, action to approve the ad hoc budget committee?
I move to approve agenda item six point zero nine, action to approve ad hoc budget.
I second. Director Wiggins motioned and Director Pendrakraft seconded. Thank you. Accountant Bill Hernandez will now join us.
Thank you. So the district is proposing the creation of ad hoc budget committee to engage broad stakeholders and educate them on district's programs and financial position so they can provide feedback and support for future decision making. AJ, can you just pull up page three for me?
You bet.
The reason why we are proposing this committee is because you're going after me. Did you see me man a little bit on my graph? If you zoom in on my graph, you can see our five-year ending fund balance plan, it's all in the red. By the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we are projecting the ending fund balance being ninety percent of total revenue, which is below what you, the board, have recommended. Let me keep the ending fund balance up. They recommend, prior recommendations anywhere between ten and twelve percent of the total revenue. So we believe that creating this ad hoc committee will help the district gain feedback from the district, but also broad stakeholders, broad stakeholders from the community to really identify the areas of concern, interest, and the feedback as we prepare to have these conversations in regards to, you know, our budget going forward. AJ, can you just pull up the next page for me? With the end goal, something like that, right? With the end goal of by twenty-twenty-three, flattening out to have that flat ten percent that I had mentioned earlier and maintaining that anywhere between ten, twelve percent total revenue going forward. Questions?
Director Pendrakraft, do you have any questions?
I don't want to jump the gun and I also don't want to, you know, go, go beyond the thirty thousand foot level. But I'm just curious, in, in previous years, I've heard some community members say, you know, that they weren't aware of, of listening groups or ad hoc committees or anything like that. Have you guys thought too much yet into the plan of how AJ will roll this out and get, get community members to be aware of this, this group and how they can, you know, get involved? Or is that him later?
No, I, I don't, I don't think we've got a step-by-step action plan of a way to invite him. But I know that we're going to be intentional about trying to reach people in every one of them.
We can't hear him.
Yeah, you can't hear what I'm saying. I'll go over there.
Hey, please plug in the microphone.
Oh, great. Sorry to ping on the spot, AJ.
No, it's all good. I, what I can say where we're at right now is that we need to have a broad group with our entire community so that just limit, limit it to people who are parents within the district or specific parts of our community. We need to make sure we hit people from all different regions of our district to make sure that we're getting those perspectives. So we'll definitely have a strong action plan together so that we can try and hit as many people in the community as we can.
Great. And will we, Superintendent Hanson, will we hear more about that as we get closer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Director Karyon, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I read this over again. You know, I'm a little confused on the role of the ad hoc committee. You know, is, is the ad hoc committee gold to align the cares goals with the budget? Or is it to support the budget drive to above ten percent? You know, in, in relation to what their, what the committee, what the committee's role is from the community? That makes sense?
To quote Superintendent Hanson, yes. The big committee, the, the purpose of the committee is to use the Tohoma cares goals as our, as our North Star, as our guideline, like, like we have district-wide and, and, you know, maintain our academic excellence at the same time as maintaining our fiscal responsibility as a, as a district. It's not an either or, it then is a all encompassing. Tohoma cares is what Tohoma is and we as the Lions, the Army, and the district have to make sure that we keep the lights on and keep the doors open.
Yeah, I guess that's my, my point is, I mean, it's, you know, the, I mean, we're going to have to make serious decisions here on things to stop, basically, right? To stop doing. And it's got to be the community's input, what, what is the priorities of what we continue to do, what we don't continue to do in order to maintain and change the budget from a negative threshold up to a positive. So, you know, that, that's, so I get your point and I hope that's where they find their value is and not, not being finance. I'm saying that we don't want finance, but we want people to understand what is the community's interests and priorities in our budget moving forward.
So I, I think a good way to think about it is, you know, we've got a lot of fixed costs. We think about salaries, wages, insurance, like Bill said, keeping the lights on, things like that. In addition, our community has already told us that the Tohoma cares goals are what they're prioritizing as where we should be directing our focus and with that comes our budget as well. So when you think about some of those, I guess, untouchable items and then the priorities that our community has placed, it's working within those parameters to then say, all right, if, when are the decisions that can be made, there are obviously, you can't stop paying people and you know where our community's priorities lie. So from there, can you help us come up with important questions and considerations that the board can consider so that we can make those budget decisions, knowing that those parameters are already in place? If that makes more sense?
Yeah, no, thanks.
Superintendent Hanson, you and I had a conversation last week. I think we were talking about the goals for this specific group. Do you mind sharing what you show me then?
Yeah, look, just reinforcing what Bill said about what are the questions that we need to be asking that we're not thinking of asking, having to clarify what our priorities are within Tohoma cares. And then like Director Karyon just shared, if what we're really talking about is narrowing the gap in expenditures and revenue, there's two ways to do that. One is through controlling expenditures, the other is through controlling revenue and seeking guidance and support around how to be close on, from both sides.
Director Karyon, since we can't see your face right now, does that help answer your question?
Yeah, definitely. My final question is, I know you're saying that, I mean, what's your, what's your vision of how often this, this group would meet over the course of the next, I mean, I guess the next two years?
So at a minimum, what we'd like, what the request is, is that we get forming this early in the fall and begin meeting as early as October with at least three meetings because there's an education period that needs to occur as well. And so that we begin getting feedback before the next budget cycle, which really begins in earnest in February of twenty-three. So that's the timeline that we're looking at.
Great, thanks.
Director Wiggins, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, this, I'm not going to go back to your computer. Just about, I think, is this a, is this a public document? It should be a public document. So I would just kind of, please. I do think there's a part of this that's interesting for the people watching online who follow this, that there is a, just kind of a breakdown of what the stakeholders will like, you kind of described this, the community line stakeholders will be. So I would just, I, I'd go on record and just encourage people who want to be involved in this, this is the process. And I think, you know, this is a, this is really important work. And so I'm, I'm glad to see that we're trying to plug in tightly in partnership with the community that we may look with a tough choice, I think. One thing that would be critical is that we really kind of define what the role of the ad hoc committee is. I think you might be talking about, you know, education, but what was, how does this committee function? And to Director Karyon's point, I think those are some TV's there, about, over there thinking there about how this thing works functionally and effectively to, to share that information, what, what really matters to the community. But I'm glad to see. to share that information, what really matters to the community. But I'm glad to see that in my stuff.
And since that is the end of our discussion, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The approval of Agenda Item 6.09, action to approve our ad hoc budget committee passes four to zero. And that brings us to, thank you, that brings us to Agenda Item 610, which is our Public Relations Department Year in Review. And our PR Director AJ Marcy is going to turn us.
Can we just move your desk over?
Hey, wanted to take a moment to look back at everything that's happened over the last 10 months or so. As Dawn and Mary mentioned earlier, it was a challenging year for staff. It was a challenging year for staff, for our families. And we think about a lot of the obstacles that were in our way. And when we look at the board, three of you were not in those seats when we started the school year. And you had a lot to learn while also being charged with moving the district forward and our work and overcoming a lot of those obstacles. And fortunately, we had that North Star that was guidance all along the way. And that was the To Home and CARES goals that our community has identified as being our priorities. And so, want to look back kind of as a reminder of the progress that's been made with those goals, but also remind ourselves, even though when we think back, we think about the challenges, we think about the pandemic and all of the hurdles that we had to get through, especially early on in the year. But when you were in our buildings and you saw the achievements that our students had, there was definitely a lot to celebrate. And want us all just to be able to take a moment and recognize a lot of those things as well, be able to remember a lot of those celebrations from here as we move forward. So, first day of school, all these adorable pictures here are from the first day of school. And back in person, full-time, everyone's here in person learning together. And we were excited. We were hopeful. We were motivated. And at the same time, we know a lot of families, a lot of staff were a little bit nervous about being back. For some students, they thrived learning at home, others not so much. For some, coming back to school was really exciting for them, and not everyone had that same experience. But we came back and saw a lot of positive things happening early on. We saw students supporting students. We saw staff supporting students, even though COVID was impacting our schools. We had a lot of staff who had to pivot and do things that they weren't used to, and were able to find success in new ways. So, I want to take you through a little bit of a To Home by the numbers and just give you a quick rundown of some fact figures that might stand out that some of these were because of the impacts of COVID-19. I looked at the first one right there on the list. We had over 655,000 meals that our food services team dished out to students this year because of the federal funds that were in place. Every student got to eat breakfast and lunch at school for free this year, and that was a huge support that we were able to offer. At the same time, it created a lot more work for our food services team. They had to serve everything in brown paper bags. And we're still focused on serving quality food and making sure that every kid that wanted to eat was able to have access to that. So, a huge shout-out to our food services team and the work that they put in. We know bus ridership was down. If you were waiting in traffic by a lot of the schools, you were probably able to see that a lot more families were dropping off their kids. We still had a transportation department that was extremely committed to making sure that our routes were covered. If you were in our transportation building a lot of mornings, it was almost empty around there, but it's because people were out driving buses. They were covering routes. We knew the impacts that COVID had on staffing, and a number that's not up there is zero, but it's the routes in school days that we had to cancel because of staffing issues, which was not the same for a lot of districts. So, our transportation staff was super, super committed to getting kids to and from school safely. A couple of weeks ago, we recognized the maintenance team over there, too, for getting the 100 percent score under state patrol school bus inspection. So, a lot of people over in that department doing a lot of work to take care of kids on the roads. Also with COVID-19, we talked about our partnerships a lot and partnerships with families and students and staff. Community partnerships are also a huge, huge part of that. And one that we connected with a lot earlier than this year was the Huguenot Sound Regional Fire Authority who had access to vaccines, especially for younger age children, before a lot of organizations did. And they were great partners with us to have us utilize their space and help promote their events and administer almost 1,200 doses to people within our district who wanted to get their kids vaccinated. So, they were outstanding with the kids when they came to our buildings. I know a couple of our directors were there and saw how supportive they were of the kids who were scared to get their shots. I know a couple of our directors were there and accepted the kids when they got their shots in a really tough time. It was a really great example of that community partnership for sure. Some more numbers. We knew that coming back, it was exciting to be back, but we also knew that our students and our adults were going to have to be supported in their mental health and their physical health in ways that they never were before. Liz earlier mentioned our Esper coordinators and the work that they've done. That expanded to our 11th graders this year, and we had 63 students who referred to services and resources. So, Liz had mentioned about 20 percent of those probably would not have been identified. What's not up there is that even though 63 were referred to services, every student who completed the screen was connected to that Esper coordinator. So, if anything, it was an opportunity to have an adult in the school that's focused on their mental wellbeing who they could connect with and who could be a resource for them. So, the work that they're doing is extremely important. In addition to those Esper coordinators, we have a lot of staff who are fortunate to have that grip to home, who are really focused on the mental wellness of our students. We have full-time nurses at every school and then a lot of additional support nurses who were here to help out with the COVID test site, to help out with the test to stay program. And our nurses who we know were extremely busy just did some extra support. And the contract nurses and the unicorns, as Lori called them, who came in and offered that extra support were really great. Our family support partners, we haven't talked much about this group yet, but these are 10 really dedicated parent volunteers who work closely with our equity team, and that program's just starting up. But we have a family support partner at all nine of our schools. We have a second one at the high school. And what these folks really are is to be an extension of our staff who can reach out to families and try and connect them to helpful resources, maybe community things like the food bank, maybe helping figure out how to navigate their schools for some families who are getting into the country and have language barriers. They can connect them to translation and interpreter services. It's a completely volunteer position. They kind of got thrown into it without really knowing exactly what the role is going to be, but they knew that families in our district can support, and they're doing such a good job. And then, at the bottom there, we have three additional nationally board certified educators. That includes our dean over at Lake Wilderness, Amanda Blashaw, Leanne O'Leary, who is the counselor over there, and then Matthew Marady-Gemans over at the high school. I didn't put it up there, but we now have 80 nationally board certified educators all time at To Home, and that's pretty special. I was up at the high school with someone a couple of months ago, and we had walked past by the front office there where we have the plaques of some of the nationally board certified staff at the high school there. And I said, wow, To Home's got a lot of staff. And it's funny to say, let's just have the high school. It doesn't even include all of our buildings. So, a few more numbers. You know, we talked about being back and being able to support kids and all of those challenges. There were still so, so many positive things happening, especially from an academic standpoint. Think about the CTE offerings and the number of kids that are so excited to participate in those programs and develop skills. And what you guys allow for them to continue that work and continue expanding and give more to our freedom to create these really wonderful programs for kids is super outstanding. We know kids in our high school are super smart. We know from our student rep who wore up here all year, how super involved in AP classes, that kids are excited to challenge themselves and take those types of courses. And it happens outside of the classroom, too, if you want to challenge yourself. So many kids in athletics and ASV activities. And then bottom right there, that's our girls swim and dive team, who won the first girls swim and dive state championship in program history. And it's just one of the so many successes that we have. So, came back, we had to support kids, but kids were still thriving. They were really trying to accept and push themselves. And it was really awesome to see all that they accomplished. And for this group here, three new board directors, and you were all super, super busy. Like I said, you had time to learn while still moving the work forward. But I know that I really admire that you didn't wait back and expect people to come to you with information. You got out there. You learned for yourself. You got out in schools. You engaged with kids. You engaged with the community. You engaged with staff. So, I know you were all super busy, but I hope that you're able to take the time and step back. I appreciate that as well. Man, I told you not to run this long, but I'm doing it. I do want to hit on each of our goals as well here. So, at the start, I talked about our North Star and being able to create that through line, I think, at the start of the year. I'm thinking back to E L T in August and we adopted these goals. And people, a lot of folks that I talked to didn't really know where they fit out on. I know I know who know where I fit out on that line. And through the department plans that you charge us with, through the site plans that all of our buildings are doing, you've heard from all of the departments that came up and were super, super motivated to figure out their mission, vision, value group. What are the tasks that they want to accomplish here over the next few years that are going to move us toward those goals? And they were really, really excited for that work and want to be able to move that forward. So, I'm going to just touch on each of the goals and some of the accomplishments or key moments that happened within each of those goal areas throughout the year. First one is climate and culture. I think everyone in our district heard the word belonging a lot this year, and that was intentional. It was needed. We knew, we showed some of those numbers about supporting kids, whether that's both mentally and physically, but also the recovery learning aspect and making sure that kids, when they walk into a classroom, could focus on academics and not have to think about a lot of those exterior things. And that starts with kids feeling like they really belong in a classroom, feeling like they're supported, knowing that their teachers are looking out for them, that their peers have their backs. And so, that was a huge point of emphasis for us. I really love this picture on the right. This was the first day of transitional kindergarten at Lake Wilderness. All of our T-Caters were paired up with an older Lake Wilderness student who knows the building, who knows the Wildcat culture, who helped their hand and brought them to their classroom on their first day for four and five-year-olds. That's a pretty special moment to have an older student who's looking out for you like that. Also, with the environment and culture, we obviously put a huge emphasis on belonging, but if you look at some of those other targets there, safety is a big part of that. What our SROs offer for our district and our community partnerships with our local law enforcement, that's a huge, huge advantage that our district has to be able to keep our students safe. And then there's collaborative leadership. And with the calendars that we just adopted, there are so many more opportunities for adults to get in and collaborate, bounce ideas off each other, and think about what we can do that's really going to be best for kids. So, it was something that we were passionate about this year, but it's something that is, we're going to have more chances for moving forward. I talked about wellness. The partnership that Liz and our wellness team have with the city and Stephanie Williams over there is really tremendous. It's a great opportunity for us to partner on events. When you think about some of the issues that are challenging our community, the fentanyl epidemic, addiction, mental health crises, these things are community issues, but they're also not, To Home is not immune to those things either. So, to have a district and a city that partner on those things is a big advantage as well. On the right, that's our SAML group. I think when you were there, you were picking your heads out from behind, but King County Councilmember Redd came in that group. These are students who are advocating for mental health and addiction awareness and de-stigmatizing those conversations around young people. And think about the work that's being done by adults and giving students the voice and the agency to be able to create those safe spaces and those conversations among young people is huge. Young people talking to their peers, influencing them goes a really, really long way. That group was really exciting. Just about a week or maybe two ago, Councilmember Dunn gave, awarded that group the Martin Luther King Jr. Distinguished Service Award for King County. So, a really important honor for those kids as well. When we talk about equity, it obviously starts with the adoption of the equity policy. That was something who, you heard from a couple of the students who are on the left there and who are extremely involved, not only in the Asian Student Union, who adopted their ASV just a few weeks ago, but were huge advocates for the Student Voice Committee at the high school, which is devoted to the equity work amongst students. They were big leaders in the culture fair up there as well. And you've heard of them here speaking about the value of that policy and seeing the euphoria among, at least at the high school where they spent their days, and adopting that to make sure that all of our students feel welcome, safe, supported, and like they belong is a huge, huge step. Some of the things that are happening in the classroom, we know our equity team is considering some of the curriculum that we're looking at. Emily Hard did a great job this year connecting with a couple of the Native American tribes in the area to get their perspective on some of the history that we teach around those cultures. We introduced the Karen narrative books. Those were approved last spring and made their way into classrooms this year. These are some of the Rainbow Library books that we recently approved and that we have some of our P K members that were super supportive of getting those within our schools, a little bit on those books. Those are from the Gay Lesbian and Straight Education Network, and they're great specific. They're LGBTQ affirming texts that went through an important review process to make sure that we're putting books that are supporting the diversity and the different cultures within our schools. And I think what's important to note, too, is that they're quality texts, right? They're from award-winning authors. They're bestselling books. These are books that are supportive of the students and the families within our community and will now be on all of our elementary schools in the fall, too. So, also with an idea, I mentioned the culture fair. To me, I can't think of a better example this year of taking the work that we're doing within To Home and CARES and seeing students bring it to life. Students set up their own booths. They were excited to talk about their culture. They were excited to talk about their diversity. They wanted to share it with their community, not just with students, but adults and people who don't even necessarily have ties to the district. They really want to celebrate their cultures and each other's cultures. And that was a really, really great event for students to feel like they were being supported by their district and their culture was being supported by us as well. I talked about partnership earlier. So, a couple of these photos here, these are some of our committees who, a lot of those things got put on pause just because of the pandemic. The committee that you, we just discussed before, the ad hoc budget committee, is going to go a long, long way toward making sure that we have community input when we're making really difficult budget decisions. A housing committee that's looking at short-term and long-term solutions for our district. A safety committee that is, has representation from law enforcement, from the fire department, from parents within our district, and collaborating to make sure that we think about the safety of our buildings. We're getting all of those different perspectives and are doing what's best for students. Another big partnership piece this year, we had a high school principal retiring through duty, and we reached out to our community to get their input. What's valuable for you in a principal? Everyone's kids are going to go through that building. What do you want to see from the person that's leading our largest school, our only high school? And we've got an over, we had over 2,000, I think, people provide their input on that. And then that was forwarded along to Highland Committee. I think it was close to 30 people on there. It was a big, big team. And they use that input from our full community to drive their questions, to drive their priorities for Highland to develop. And that was a really good example. And that was a really good example of them providing that input in a really tangible way. And then with partnerships, what we don't talk about much is the partnerships that our students can have with our community too. The SAMHOD group, a great example of that. There are lots of little fun opportunities for that too. So these are our Lake Wilderness Elementary students who led the food drive there this year that supported the Maple Valley Food Bank. All of our schools participated in a book drive and donated thousands and thousands of books that go to the food bank as well too. So when you ask kids to participate in that community partnership, they definitely step up and they want to participate there too. When I think about our department cares goals, all of those that I've just mentioned are so, so valuable in developing young people into great young adults. And when we think about belonging and when we think about equity and if we get the question, what is the purpose? What's it really in service of? It's putting kids in a position where they can feel confident to go and meet the charge of the high expectations that are being set for them. On the left there, that's the Shadow Lake Elementary training team. I took notes on this because this is way above my head. So these kids use machine learning and a coping app to track populations of steelhead and then they find solutions to preserve fish populations. That's insane, whatever that is. But they're developing really important foundational skills that are going to give them skills at a young age, do really high demand work that the industries are excited about. And those are our future bare metal kids. Those are the kids who are going to go to a world's competition and be one of the best teams at creating robots and collaboration among teams in the world. So it's so, so awesome to see. It happens outside of the classroom too. So on the left there, left picture, person on the right, that's Caitlin Nessel. Caitlin pitched the first perfect game in Tohoma baseball history this year. That's our girls cross country team, both the girls and the boys were at state this year. I wrote down a whole bunch of athletic stuff because there was a lot. Boys basketball went to the state tournament and earned a trophy. First time they'd been there in over 25 years. Boys soccer went to state. We had individual champs in track and field and wrestling. It was a really, really impressive year for athletics. I already mentioned the girls swim and dive team too, who won the state championship. It also happens in our ASV clubs and activities. These two here are pretty impressive. On the left, that's Victoria Evans. If you've ever been, not ever, but in the last couple of years, if you've been to play or production up at the pack for the high school, you see how talented she is. On the right there, that's Emily Russell. Emily's mom is our teacher over at Tohoma Elementary. And Emily, this year, decided that she wanted to do ASL interpretation for Anastasia. It's the very first time that Tohoma High School has had an ASL interpreter. When her mom brought her and asked her, why are you doing this? Why are you going in before school, giving your power hour, going in after school to do that? Wasn't for a grade, wasn't for a resident builder. She told her, it's just one more way to make people feel like they belong. And that's pretty special to have someone, a student at our high school who is willing to give up their time and already demanding, busy schedule and think about belonging for students who wouldn't otherwise be able to make, go and experience that in the same way as everyone else. So super cool. And of course, it all leads to this, right? That's why we, that's why we get out, that's why we do what we do. It's for 613 kids to turn their tassels and toss their hats and walk out as future ready graduates. So we think back to all those challenges this year and everything that got in our way. And that's why we do it, right? That's why we push through. And it was really exciting, there was a lot of accomplishments. So I recognize that, I hope you all recognize that. You're able to step away from what could otherwise be categorized as a really you-know-what year and you're really proud of everything that you've accomplished as a visitor. So I assume you have any questions, but I mean, you can ask any question, you were there too.
I have some, I have a question.
And actually, Director Pendrath, before you ask a question, we need to extend. So can you just give me a thumbs up, saying that you extend?
Sorry.
Okay. Now, this is, this is the best agenda item to extend. Okay, Director Pendrath.
I was just going to say, AJ, that this just made my being, it was like a little gift that you just presented all of us. And I just want to say thank you so much. And I feel like you have done such a beautiful job. I hope you like your job. I appreciate you so, so much. This is just beautiful, so thank you so much, selfishly. It just really made me smile.
Director Carrion?
Thanks, John, AJ, really great, yeah, really great presentation. It really, yeah, it doesn't smile on my face as well. I think what you're saying.
Director Wiggins?
I disagree with Haley. I don't care if you like your job, you do that, so please keep that. But I will say, my only regret is that like the entire community couldn't hear that presentation. I mean, the people who are in this room are very sparse tonight. I'm kind of okay with that because it keeps my lights and loads, but whoever's watching on video, I hope there are people out there. I wish you would understand this message, especially this last year, because there's been such a, there's been such a drive, like focus on paying to be. You're going to find whether you're in the report. But yeah, we see the individual trials and we all have a benefit of participating in many of those as curators, as administrators and staff. I would encourage people in the community to go out there and look at this stuff and then go engage, get involved, make those individual connection points. And that's something, that's something that we need to, that I've talked a lot about. Just, it just happens one thing at a time. And so the little things, kind of a montage of little things have been going on throughout the year, so thank you.
That was another, another one of the challenges of this year is we couldn't invite people into our buildings in the same way because of a lot of the restrictions that were in place. So really excited for the fall and hopefully we can invite more people and allow them to really see some of these accomplishments up close, for sure.
I actually have a follow-up question to that, because I agree with you. I think it would be fantastic for our community to hear about these celebrations. I know, Pat, you are a fantastic video editor, so hopefully you can highlight this on your YouTube channel as well. But do you have plans to roll this out to the community?
Not, not this slideshow. I, I will say, almost everything that I showed you, it was trying to pull all the celebrations that we shared throughout the year and be able to package them up. So I don't know if there's anything out there that we didn't share with our community, but we can talk about it.
That's your voice, I love your voice, it just makes me so happy.
I also wanted to acknowledge, there was a number on here that did not make it. And I hope I'm getting this number right. It's 11, 11 months, it's like 11 and a half months to Tohoma, is that right? So I, as you were presenting, I was taking note of some terms that you used very comfortably that you would not have been able to use 11 and a half months ago. TK, ASV, SROs. And I know you had a lot to learn along the levy bond route, because those, that can be confusing. And I think it's so impressive and so worthy of celebration because you, my friend, had an immense uphill, not battle, but you had a challenge that you had to overcome. And it's taken a lot of effort and it's taken a lot of heart. Because it would be very easy to just do your, do the bare minimum and just scratch the surface with this partnership goal that we have. And you have knocked, you have dug in and you have shown up to take those pictures and you have reached out to our community to find other things that we can celebrate. And I appreciate your proactivity because you are proactive, you are not reactive. And every single time that we asked you a question tonight about whether you had a plan for things like the new principal announcement and the school year calendar update and the ADHOC committee, you had a plan, you'd already been thinking about it. And that's the proactive, I guess, nature or proactive spirit that we really need. And so we are fighting that, I'm so grateful for that. And then in closing, my favorite part, you've contributed a lot to this community in the last-
This isn't about me.
I know. I know, you know, we need to sell, yeah, we're having a celebration, it's the AG celebration, blessing. But you've contributed a lot to our district. But one thing that I just love so, so much is your addition of the Tohoma family. And you are constantly reminding all of us to incorporate that wording in our communication, in our conversations. Because it is true, but also because you have identified it as a key area of strength for Tohoma. And so I want to thank you for that gift, because that has just been a fantastic part of the district.
You got it, thank you.
I'll stop. Okay, thank you very much, AJ.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. We will move on. Okay. I did that at 6:11, action to approve resolution 2022-05, capital facilities planned for 2022-23. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 611, action to approve the resolution 2022-05, capital facilities planned for 2022-23.
I move to approve Agenda Item 611, action to approve resolution 2022-2025, capital facilities planned for 2022-23.
I move to approve Agenda Item 611, action to approve resolution 2022-2025, capital facilities planned for 2022-23.
Second. Director Wiggins motion and Director Pendrath expected, thank you. And we have Director of Finance Operations Lori Fung joining us.
I really would like to suggest that we put that presentation on at the end next time. And then try and follow up with three, the agenda items have such numbers in it, so. We'll be nearly as excited.
I smile while I do it.
So what you have in front of you is our annual capital facility plan that we bring to the board each year. This plan is necessary in order for us to collect impact fees. I've already presented this report and plan to the King County SDRC, which actually makes recommendations to King County Council for approval. And it is on its way to council for approval. Just a couple of things to note, some of the information that you saw on this plan or equity was actually already presented to you from the McDeMocca First Report. So I integrated all of that enrollment into McDeMocca First information into this plan. The other item that I just want to highlight had to do with the street generation factor that us commented on and how historically we use the average generation factor in our plan. Because to go out and accumulate that on your own is something most smaller districts or medium-sized districts don't do. We use an averaging from around us. So just a note from last year, our single-family generation factor was 0.572 students. And with the going out and having less calculate in districts, it moved up to 0.879. We always knew that we were higher, but to see it that much higher than what the averages around us is pretty significant. As we mentioned, as Les mentioned the other night in his presentation, he did not do the multi-house, multi-family unit generation factor, but we're going to ask him to do that for next year. So we will be looking to calculate that for us next year. Last year, the number, the average was 0.373 students. And this year, it actually went down a little bit to 0.306. So it'll be interesting to see next year if our average, my get-toe piece is higher than average for what other districts around us have, so that will probably impact it. It changed our single-family impact fee. Last year was $3,600. And so with this changing generation factor, actually, and some other factors as well, that looked up to $4,535 per single family. So that's a pretty significant increase. This will be presented after you approve it tonight. We will actually send the package off to King County. And then we also send it off to Maple Valley and Black Diamond because we have those delivering Black Diamond so that they can pass it with their council. And we will collect the impact fees from them as well.
Thank you. Director Pendrath, do you have any questions? No, and Director Carrion?
No.
Director Wiggins? Okay, so that will call, that will be the end of our discussion then. I will call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
The approval of Agenda Item 611, action to approve resolution 2022-05, capital facilities planned for 2022-23 passes for the zero. And that brings us to Agenda Item 612, which is our finance and enrollment report. And I see, Director of Finance Operations Stacey Hasey and Bill Handis, our district accounts, joining us.
Thank you. Uh, just scroll down to page two. Perfect, thank you, sir. Focusing on the year-to-date actuals column first, year-to-date revenues is a little bit under $100 million, $9.9. If you jump down to total expenditure, you can see around $104, meaning that we, if you jump down a little bit further than that for the year, our total loss of $4.2 million year-to-date. Now, if you take a look at that orange estimate column and look at the excess revenues over, under, you can see our estimate is actually $5.5 for the year. If you remember from last month, you're at $7.5. So AJ, just scroll down one more page for me. The biggest contributing factor, if you can scroll in and zoom in on that highlighted section, the biggest contributing factors to decreasing our estimated loss came from our increase in safety net and the increase in the LEA stabilization. As reviewed, safety net is funding for our students with our highest needs and corresponding our highest costs. This, what we currently get allocated for those students isn't enough to support what they need. Safety net is, as I said, is the safety net to fund us additional funds, to provide the services to those students. And our team doing an awesome, awesome job coming through this application process. Very, very timely to me, it's very extensive, a lot of the issues only has much, as much fun as we do because our team is so thorough and we're such awesome partners. Because of that, we were, our safety net came in $19,000 or more than what we, what we had initially budgeted, which is huge for the bottom line. The second factor that's highlighted below is the LEA stabilization. LEA stands for Volcanic Effort Assistance. And Director Cloud, I can't say anything here, but that's primarily related to how much we can collect on levy. Levies are basically have two common approaches, two factors. First is asset valuation, next is our enrollment. And because our enrollment is so far below where we were pre-COVID this date, this month, actually decided to come back and say, hey, not only are we going to give you enrollment and stabilization funds, which we saw last month, we're also going to give you an extra $700,000 in Volcanic Assistance and stabilization. So that's the extra $700K there. To have that off with $400K in savings in our both certificate and classified salaries and benefits, our estimated loss for the year is down to $5.5 instead of $7.5, which we recorded last month. Can't let AJ see all the glory, so AJ can scroll down all the way to the second to last page. I have some good news as well. And if you scroll up a little bit to the top section, and if you can scroll in on that top section there, the month in enrollment history, perfect. This is the enrollment history, month over month, year over year. If you take a look at where we begin the year in September and where we finish in June, pre-COVID, so the 16th through 17th and all the way through the 18th, 19th school year, we gained on average about eight students, which is pretty good, right? During COVID, for the last two years, on average, we've lost seven students per year. Not so good. This year, September through June, we've actually gained 22 students, which is huge. It's further supports what Les and Mark had mentioned last week at the worst thing. Hey, we're one of the few districts in the county who are seeing enrollment growth. And we are hoping that next year, we jump back up to our pre-COVID number without a gain of eight students. Any questions?
Director Pendrath? Director Carrion?
No.
Director Wiggins? And I don't have any questions either, so thank you. Yes, Director Pendrath can answer.
Just want to compliment both Bill and Lori. You know, when you look at the budgeted number and then you look at the actual number right now, getting to a spot where we can tell the story and allowing everybody to listen to that, to understand the complexities. And, you know, I'm just hearing that page three right now on my screen, where some things that are out of your control or aren't predictable that are listed in there, like the LEA stabilization and just the challenges that you guys face. And so helping to, it's awesome how you guys are helping to tell the story of what's within our control and what's not within our control when it comes to this. So thank you for doing that, Mr. Judd.
Agenda Item 613 is our budget update. And we have Director of Finance Operations Lori Fung joining us again.
And I have my sidekick Bill here as well. This is just an update from last week, from our budget work study that we had. We went through the numbers very thoroughly.
We went through the numbers very thoroughly and answered all the questions you might have. There are a few changes from the numbers that what you saw last week and I'm just going to highlight them so you know. If you turn to the next page, or I forgot, sorry, it's me.
Maybe not, I got it checked.
Thank you. So the revenue, I highlighted in yellow so you can see what the differences have been since the last time you saw these figures. The two things I would highlight on the revenue are the safety net, as Bill already mentioned, we budgeted, one, we were anticipating about $1.5 million with the estimate that you saw previously. And as Bill mentioned, who knows the specifics. So you brought the hats as usual and we applied for $2.8 million and actually secured $2.5 million. This 2.4 is an estimate because there's always things that we don't actually end up applying or actually building against of the variance. We're estimating it right around 2.4 that we'll actually procure for this year. That's significant. So after some discussions with Nat and Mike and Bill, we made the decision going forward, there really isn't a reason why we would expect a lower number going forward in our estimates. So not only did we change our estimate, we changed the budget and then we changed our SFR forecasting for the next three years. So that's why you see that 2.4 in there for the remainder. The other item is under other, it changed a little bit. If you want to flip to the next page, we will, after that discussion we had last weekend and you wrote it last week, a call, a question was raised about the King County grant and could we anticipate having that after next year and don't confirm that there'd be no reason why we wouldn't continue. So we, you and I had to put that in forecast for '23 through '26. So those were the changes that you saw in the revenue. There were some slight changes in enforcement, but it was very significant. The next page I would turn to, expenditures, nothing changed in total on the expenditures. There were some slight changes within certificated, classified and small amount and SOC, but nothing that changed the bottom line. So that's what you saw. And then if you want to go to the budget page, just highlighting the actual numbers that changed so that you can see what the actual implications were to those. You see that our MND fund balance for this year estimate, as Bill commented on, is $5.6 million in the red and actually the budget number dropped down to 9.3, so significantly lower than what you saw in last week due to those changes, mostly changes in the revenue. And as a result, the forecast going forward changed. So the items to note, as you see, we end the year budget next year above 10 to 12%, so we're still at 13.4, which is good. And you'll see the forecast going forward, we're slightly below that number for '23, '24. And depending on how the numbers actually start to come together for the next year, those will be what the discussions are happening about, with how to go forward on those. We are in, as you, as we speak, in fact, Bill was making your part of the meeting because he's back in his office, putting all this stuff, so we are uploading it into the OSPI system in the next couple of days. And so we have, we'll have the report ready to go and it will be posted in the paper, actually at the end of this week. The actual notice will be posted and if anybody wants to come in and review the budget, they're able to do so here in the district office. At the F195, it'll be ready. And I will make sure to put a copy of that in each one of your inboxes and we will have it at the next board meeting as well. So the next time we'll be talking about the actual budget will be at the hearing and then the next following week, you will be approving the budget.
Thank you. Director Carrion, do you have any questions or comments?
No, actually, I'm done.
Director Pendruff?
Just Lori and Bill, thank you so much. It was a really great conversation last week during work study. That was a great deep dive into, and you answered so many questions and had such a, a very thorough report for us and I just really appreciate that. I, yeah, it was great and this is great and I feel, I feel really well informed, so thank you so much.
Director Wiggins?
Thank you for that day.
Thank you. We are going to move on to Agenda Item 7.01, Board Inquiry Incorporating Tracking System, which is our VIT. Superintendent Hanson, do we have any updates?
There is no one here.
Okay, that will bring us to our adjournment, which is happening at 8:44 tonight. Thank you everybody for joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks.